A call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, October 28, 2014. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Riles. Commissioner Verba.
Present.
Commissioner Bailey has an excused absence. Commissioner Cardoza. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Bunch.
I will note that Commissioner Bunch is online. He may be having some audio issues.
Thank you.
I can hear you now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bartholomew. And Commissioner Larson has an excused absence.
All right, can we get approval of the minutes from October 14, 2024 meeting?
I move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, well now move on to business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments, make email written comments to cdaa@albanyoregon.gov, including your name before noon on the day of the meeting. To comment virtually during the meeting, register by emailing at cdaa@albanyoregon.gov before noon on the day of the meeting with your name. The chair will call upon those who have registered to speak. But appearing in person at the meeting and registered to speak is the other option. We'll now go into the resumption of quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file CP-01-24 ET fail. Have all the commission members received a copy of the agenda packet materials? Are you familiar with them? Okay, I call to order the quasi judicial public hearing at 5:17. If you wish to testify, there are two options available which was described in the agenda. Right now, do any member wish to declare conflict of interest? Do any member wish to report an ex parte contact? Do any member wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? In order for a member to participate in the deliberations, for the final recommendation, the member must have either attended the October 14 public hearing or reviewed the agenda packet and watched the video for October 14 Planning Commission meeting. Can you please state for the record that you've done so? The member who wasn't present. Up to speed, Ron?
Yes, I reviewed the, uh, I reviewed the recording of the meeting from, uh, from two weeks ago.
Thank you. Ted?
I did as well.
All right, thank you. Forum, one, two, three. Have a forum. Does anyone wish to challenge the Planning Commission's right to determine this matter or the participation of any commission member in the hearing and the decision? If so, please raise your hand, or if you are attending virtually, please turn on your camera, raise your hand, and you'll be called upon. Or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name and you can be called on. Anyone?
Yeah, this is Bill Riles. Um, I couldn't get on online, but I'm listening on the phone.
All right, thank you, Bill. So Bill is present. At this time, I call for the reading of the meeting procedures by David Martino.
Thank you. Good evening. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the Planning Commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the Planning Commission may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
At this time, I call for the staff report from Jennifer Cappello.
Good evening. This is Jennifer Cappello. I'm a planner here at the City of Albany. This is a continuation of a Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, a zoning map amendment, partition and natural resource impact review. The summary of the property is that it is proposed to do a partition along the middle of Periwinkle Creek with the northern portion being 2.8 acres and the southern portion being 1.55 acres. The northern portion is also under review for a comprehensive plan amendment from low density residential to medium density residential, as well as a zone amendment from residential single dwelling unit, or RS 6.5, to residential medium density, which is RM. There's also a natural resource impact review for the creation or the division of land that's within a riparian corridor overlay. The decision criteria can be found in Albany Development Code 2.220 sub 3 for the comp plan amendment. The zoning map amendment is 2.740. Partition is 11.180. And natural resource impact review is 6.300. The agency were noticed and public notices went out. Planning Commission makes a recommendation to city council, and city council is the deciding body. That is the conclusion of the brief summary of this staff report.
Thank you. Do any commission members have any additional clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Okay, we'll now take testimony from the applicant. Would the applicant please come forward, state your name and address, and testimony for the Planning Commission, please? New information that you're bringing forward, correct?
Yes. Hello, my name is Kim Richatelli. I'm representing the applicants Tyler David O and Amy Bean. Thank you for hearing the continuation of this proposal. At the close of the last meeting, we were actually made aware that there is an ongoing municipal citation on the property. The applicants are working with APD, trying to get that resolved now. It is unknown why that citation was not forwarded to them from the beginning, but we're, we're working through that and trying to get that fixed. Um, in the meantime, they have submitted some photos of the record of that ongoing cleanup work and what they're doing to remediate that. We request that the commission reviews the application based on the merits of the proposal and the decision criteria with the current housing needs analysis and implementation plan. We also are hoping that the ongoing municipal violation doesn't interfere with the land use process here. We request that if this is something that is interfering with the process, we're happy to add as a condition of approval or suggest to you as a condition of approval of the final plat that that municipal violation would be taken care of before anything could be moved forward. Um, that, um, I guess we're just hoping to work quickly for a resolution to make, make sure that that's taken care of. And that, that's all we have to add. Thank you.
Okay, we will now be taking new public testimony, first from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record, thank you, into the record as part of their testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to cba@albanyoregon.gov. Written testimony that was submitted by the deadline via email have been uploaded to the city website and part of the agenda packet. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? So please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the Planning Commission. I will read from the name for the audience members who wish to speak opposition or express concern about the application. So I will call on Tracy and Tammy Beller, Bowler? Sorry, I spelt, mispronounced your name. I apologize.
Thank you.
Bowler. And again, this is new testimony you're bringing forward.
This is new testimony.
All right, thank you.
Yep. My new testimony is based on a long conversation with the Community Development Department in regard to what needed to be said during this hearing to apply. And so therefore, I'm going to go ahead and read a statement that I prepared with regard to that. First of all, I want to thank all the Planning Commission members for being here, understanding after reading through this 35-page document what you have to go through each day and what you need to look at. So let me go ahead and read my statement. This is a response to the Notice of Public Hearing Comprehensive Map and Zoning Map Amendment Partition and Natural Resource Impact Review on 3016 Grand Prairie Road Southeast filed CP 0124, ZC 0124, PA 0824, and NR 02-24. After review of the 23-page community staff report and 12-page application narrative findings of fact, we are requesting that the Planning Commission not recommend to the city council that the proposed Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Zoning Map Amendment, Partition and Site Plan Review under Planning File CP 0124, ZC 0124, PA 0824, and NR 0224 be approved based on the inaccurate findings and conclusions of the October 7, 2024 staff report. Primarily, what I would like to say is that prior to discussing the findings, we would request that all members of the Planning Commission who know the owners of the property in question, Tyler David and Amy Bean, or are familiar with anyone employed by Green Cascades LLC, recuse themselves from any decision making. Furthermore, if any member of the Planning Commission, familiar with these parties, have discussed the matter with any colleagues in the Planning Commission, we request that they should recuse themselves unless they on the record explain why they can make an impartial decision on the matter. Furthermore, any Planning Commission member who has not thoroughly reviewed the 23-page community staff report and 12-page application narrative findings of fact should recuse themselves as well. It is my understanding in speaking with the author of said staff report that it was written at a sixth grade level for all to easily understand. I will tell you, I've read through it, and if you can find a sixth grader that can understand it, please let me know. Additionally, at the time, we are notifying the Planning Commission of our intent to appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, per Oregon Revised Statute ORS 197.830, should the matter be approved. In accordance with the community staff report criterion C, the requested designation is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Map Pattern. It is our belief that this conclusion is incorrect in that the proposal change does not provide a buffer between low density residential and general commercial GC or light commercial LC, and that all surrounding properties are classified as institutional or low density residential LDR. Therefore, the applicant is not putting an MDR between a commercial area and a single-family dwelling neighborhood, rather between a number of churches with, which have traffic activity, activity approximately one day a week and a residential neighborhood. Throughout the staff report and applicant narrative and findings of fact, Grand Prairie is referred to as an arterial, arterial roadway. But it's important to note that it is a minor arterial roadway, which provides both an entrance and exit to the City of Albany at a speed of 45 miles per hour. There are no signage interruptions to the flow of traffic until Waverly Drive upon entrance into Albany and for miles on the way out. The staff report and applicant narrative and findings of fact failed to address the present inability to turn left onto Waverly during peak traffic times or to address any solutions when the situation is worsened by the proposed change. Furthermore, there is a center divider on Grand Prairie just west of the property, heading towards Waverly, which may prevent a left-hand turn by not allowing a driver to pull onto the middle of the road before merging into the westbound lane, causing further safety concerns in a 45 mile per hour traffic zone. Additionally, we see no information on the current annual average daily traffic on Grand Prairie, which it seems should be included in the report. Therefore, we request review by the City of Albany and the Department of Transportation as to any possible hazards and safety concerns. Finally, as one drives through Albany, it's difficult to find an MDR when residents are not forced to park on the street due to inadequate parking. MDR development generally provides one parking spot for an entire family, and there is no on-street parking on Grand Prairie. Because of this, residents may be forced to take their chances parking on the roadway, providing yet another safety concern. We believe a number of these issues could possibly be resolved should the Community Development Department, the property owners, and Green Cascades LLC be willing to provide some transparency. However, since this is not built into the process and no attempts have been made to actually include the community in the development process, it is our request that the impartial, autonomous Planning Commission not act as a rubber stamp for the Community Development Department and recommend to the city council that the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Zoning Map Amendment, Partition, and Natural Resource Impact Review not be approved. Hopefully, that was detailed enough.
Thank you. Did you have a copy of that for staff? Thank you. Next is Curtis Pitt. And state your name, address, and any new information you have.
My name is Curtis Pitt, 3314 Mountain View Drive, Albany, Oregon. The new information I have is all in regards to the traffic report memo, the trip generation memo. I believe that the applicants provided you and the Planning Department with misleading numbers. I spoke to Jennifer from the Planning Department. She informed me that as the property sits now, there can be one residence on either side of Periwinkle Creek, and that can be up to a fourplex. So this would mean according to the traffic, the trip generation memo, that there could be an increase of 29, um, daily trips. In their report, they stated that there would be a decrease of 14 trips in the townhome development and 115 additional trips if it was a single dwelling unit. Um, those numbers are nowhere near correct. If it was a townhome development, there would be an additional 475 trips a day, and if it was a single home dwelling, it would be 245 additional trips per day. And this far exceeds the threshold for a significant effect on an existing or planned transportation facility. And once again, like I said, I believe those numbers were completely misleading to you guys in order to get a favorable ruling for them. Um, there's no way that in the RS 6.5 townhome development that they can put 72 units on that property as it is zoned now. And that's how they figured their traffic generation memo. So it's completely false. And the other new information I have is about the wildlife. I brought some photos showing the bald eagles in the area and the gray foxes that come from the riparian corridor there to in the middle of the night through the property, so.
Thank you, Curtis. Please leave your testimony with the staff. Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the application? If so, please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the Planning Commission. Does the applicant wish to provide any rebuttal testimony?
Kim Richatelli again, Green Cascades. Just quickly, a reminder, we have no development proposed with this application. So as far as the first testimony went, we, we understand that all parking needs, future development needs, whether it was developed to single family or medium density, would have to be taken care of with a future application. We are not proposing development at this time. And then as far as a comment to that traffic memo, I believe it was misread. The traffic memo is stating worst case development or biggest, most maximum development in the residential signal family versus residential medium density. It does not compare, if you were just to put one household on that property, it compares both, both situations at full development. Thank you.
Does the staff wish to respond to any testimony that was being presented?
Uh, yes. As to the first person who testified, Mr. Bowler, the intent to appeal to LUBA is not a ripe case at the moment because the Planning Commission simply makes a recommendation. That recommendation goes to city council. City council will be the ultimate person or body that makes the decision. It is at that point that if you're interested in appealing that decision, that it could go to LUBA. I also would like to point out that the existing RS 6.5 zoning would permit townhomes on minimum lot sizes of 1,500 square feet, only going through the land division process. So even if the applicant decided to pull the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and the zoning map amendment, the ability to put townhomes on that, as long as the lots have 15,000 square feet or 1,500, sorry, square feet, is something that's already allowed in the RS 6.5 zone. And this is the result of state legislature, legislator changes that happened a couple of years ago, dealing with the advent of middle housing. And so basically, you are allowed to do middle housing, anything from duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes and cottage clusters on all properties that meets the minimum zoning, even if it's a single-family zone. So I just wanted to point that out so that the difference between what could be put there now in terms of density is not much less than there would be if the map amendments are approved.
Madam Speaker, is your microphone on?
Sorry, thank you, John. If this, I keep turning it off so I don't make background noises. But does any commission member wish to recuse themselves? I have no additional information, so I declare this public hearing closed at 5:39 PM. Okay, does the Planning Commission wish to discuss this case or ask questions of staff? Bill or Ted that's online, do you have any questions for the staff?
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I just want to make sure you can hear me. No, I don't have any questions right now. Thanks.
I do not either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioner present have any questions for staff?
I do. Just a quick question to Jennifer, just to get some clarification, since there's a lot of concerns about the traffic, and I've heard a lot of different numbers about what was in the report versus potentially conversation that happened. So I was hoping maybe you could provide clarification on the number of traffic trips?
We have the memo, um, as the applicant representative mentioned. That is, memo's based on maximum build-out. So right now, hypothetically, if there was no zone amendment and the northern portion of the property were to be developed with lots at 6,500 square feet, or townhouses which are at 1,500 square feet if they did a land division, that is the, that initial number of maximum average or the peak PM trips. If the zone amendment is approved with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, it reduces the lot size to 3,000 instead of that 6,500. So you are able to get a few more dwelling units on it, which would increase the maximum or your peak PM trips. In conversations that I've had with concerned members of the community, it is if they were to just put a building permit on there. So if you're looking at it without any development, any divisions, and you wanted to put a fourplex or a single, obviously your traffic's going to be significantly less than if you were to do a full build-out partition. So I'm thinking that might be where some of the confusion has come. I have mentioned that single, duplex, triplex, fourplex cottage clusters do not require any sort of land use review, it's just a building review. Townhouses are a middle housing land division, which does have a review, and they would receive notice at that time if they were to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I know that there's no development currently planned, but you know, there's a lot of concerns. So I just wanted to make sure I understood from you.
Yeah. And then another thing to point out is, in the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it's a large handbook, and they have values that are standard, and those values for middle housing are smaller than single dwelling units. So that's why it looks like it goes down if you build middle housing versus single. I don't know if that helps at all, but.
Any other questions for staff? Do I hear a motion? Just in motions presented on the documented mail to the commission earlier today? Motion?
Chair Miller.
That's Commissioner Bunch.
I'd like to make a motion. Uh, before I make the motion, if I heard correctly, uh, the applicant suggested that one of the things that we could consider is the municipal citation that's currently on the property? And so I would add that to my motion in terms of that being taken care of prior to. And I believe it was related to cleanup of the property, which we received some pictures of today.
So what is your motion, Commissioner Bunch?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, Zoning Map Amendment, Partition, and Site Plan Review under Planning File CP-01-24, ZC-01-24, PA-08-24, NNR-02-24, with the addition of the, uh, municipal citation being taken care of. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the October 7, 2024 staff report and the findings in support of the application made by the Planning Commission during deliberations on this matter.
Chair, could I interject something here?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so procedurally, it's not a site plan review that's part of the application. It's actually a natural resource impact review. And Commissioner Bunch did cite the correct file numbers for those, but it also would need to mention But it also would need to mention that this is conditioned in the October 7, 2024 staff report, just to be specific as to where the recommendation is coming from. Thank you.
A second. Thank you, Bill. Is there any further discussion? Off of the vote. Your roll call.
Commissioner Riles. Commissioner Bunch.
Aye.
Commissioner Verba.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Bartholomew.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Right. Appears that the motion has passed, and the recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council. And please remember, members of the audience, you can go to the City Council meeting and express your concerns and provide written testimony as to whether or not this should because they are the ones who make the final decisions. Yes?
Testimony transferred to the City.
I'm not sure that procedure.
Yes, it will. Yes, it's all part of the record, and this will be presented to City Council.
I'm aware of that.
That will... If that's what, yes, that information would be in the record, and the council meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 6 at 5, or 6 o'clock.
I failed to mention that. Please be sure to attend the City Council meeting and express your concerns before they make their final vote. It's not just an automatic seal of approval. They will take in consideration everything before they make their final decision. Here to move those things forward. Any business from the Commission? Any staff updates?
What am I supposed to say about this? Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Ann. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Ann Catlin, Community Development Department. I'm the Conference of Planning Manager. You received a handout by email, but I just wanted to give you an update on upcoming meetings and things going on because there have been a lot of things in works, and we're kind of getting in the thick of things, so you will be busier coming up. So the Housing Implementation Plan, we've been working on that for implementing ideas from the Housing Implementation Plan. We've had some work sessions, and you are aware of that. But I did want to let you know that we've scheduled a housing forum for Thursday, November 14, here in the council chambers at 5:30. We'll go over some of the proposals from the Housing Implementation Plan. It's just a chance for the public. You don't have to attend these things unless it says Planning Commission on here, but just wanted you to be aware of that. If you had friends and colleagues and neighbors that would be interested in that, we'll be doing public notice about that. And then there are sort of two packages of proposals with the Housing Implementation Plan. There are policy proposals that the council makes decisions on, and those are moving forward a little more quickly because we don't have to have Planning Commission involved. And those are some tools that, one is adopting a construction excise tax to raise money for affordable housing. We are looking at a tax abatement program for low-income rental housing and surplus property policies. And so those are things the council have been working on, and those will go to the council, we hope, December 11. Then the development code package, which you are familiar with, is coming to you in December, at your December meeting, December 16, and will go to council in January. The other big project that we've been working on is a climate-friendly areas implementation project. So that is taking those six areas and actually making any changes to the zoning map or whatever. It's an overlay zone and the development code to officially adopt those. So we've been holding open houses the last couple of months. We still have two more, one's tomorrow night, and the other is November 12. They're both here, and they start at 4:30, but people can drop in between 4:30 and 6:00, and they have not been really well attended. So I assume that people that are in these areas are either aren't that concerned, or I don't know. Anyway, we have tried to identify areas where there are very few changes being proposed, and that may be the reason, but you're welcome to stop in. You will, we're trying to schedule the Planning Commission and council to hold a public work session early 2025 because we'll have, we just want you to see what any code amendments are, and this is tentative, it's my current idea. So look for that next year. And then we're planning on the Planning Commission hearing being in March, which seems really far out, but it's, we've got all these other amendments happening, and when you amend the code, and they're all in different stages, it gets, it's really complicating. So that's that project. And then we have also been working on our comprehensive plan, which you got to hear a little bit about the comprehensive plan map. There's also the whole document, which is our guiding document. The development code's really just implementing tool of the comprehensive plan. There are a lot of sections that are really outdated. There are some facility plans that haven't been adopted and supporting documents, and we just haven't had staff time, and there's been a lot of change with other departments. So we're going to be bringing that to you, but it's mostly just, it's not any, anything that you don't already know about. I mean, we've done housing needs analysis, the Housing Implementation Plan, and the East Albany Area Plan, and all those things, but we're really trying to update some of the background content that's from the 1980s and some facility plans, like the Public Works adopted a new water master plan, for example, and make sure that those documents are referenced in the comprehensive plan. So it'll look, it might look like a lot, but it's really just intended to be an update to get the document current. And then we're hoping to start next year working on a bigger update to the plan, and that will involve a lot more community involvement. We have to reinstate a citizen or community involvement committee and different things, so stay tuned for more on that. But any questions while I'm here? Okay. We'll be seeing a lot of you soon.
All righty. Thank you, Ann.
I'd like to add, too, that we are at least tentatively scheduled to hold a Planning Commission meeting on December 16, and this is in relation to some code updates that we will need to follow that Jennifer could talk some about. This is having to do with FEMA and the pre-implementation compliance measures that the city will have to undertake. So City Council will be considering three different options, and this will be taking place a little later in November. But whatever option they choose, then we need to prepare some amendments and take that to the Planning Commission, possibly as soon as December 16.
Any other staff report?
As you might realize, the Planning Commission doesn't typically hear subdivision cases any longer because of state law changes. It's now generally a staff-level review unless the application gets appealed, in which case it would come to the Planning Commission. But as a result, we find that, like in the summer and the fall, we had to cancel a lot of meetings because there wasn't any business to bring to the Planning Commission. And so to help you manage your own time as far as when your availability is for, you know, coming to serve on the Planning Commission, we propose to have the Planning Commission meetings down to just once a month. So that way, you'll have some more certainty as to which meeting might actually be held and would free up some of your scheduled time, too, so that you're not having to commit to a meeting that then ultimately gets canceled.
We'll try to send the schedule out for the year, but know that we may need to modify some of those dates. The third is sometimes a holiday. The first is also sometimes a holiday. The first Monday, so is the third. So we have a few months where the third Monday isn't going to work, but we've tried to plan these out. And then, you know, if we need to have something happen in order to meet some of our deadlines and state law timelines, we will adjust the schedule and keep you updated. But yeah, we didn't want you to have something on your calendar that we haven't, we just haven't needed to meet as frequently, but we do think once a month, we might actually be meeting for sure once a month coming up. Okay?
Great. Thank you, because I appreciate that, and definitely not meeting just to meet.
That's right.
If there's nothing on there. Okay. Thank you so much. And with that said, our next meeting is scheduled sometime in November. It will be determined. Anything else with a good order? If not, I adjourn the meeting at 5:55 PM. Thank you.